Will we see participants joining? Will we know who's in?
If you click on the list of participants, you should be able to see who joined, but if anybody calls in, you'll just see a phone number. Yeah, there's a couple of people that called in already.
Eighteen. Nineteen.
Oh, there's Jim McGaw. Hi, Jim.
How do you see that?
Click on Participants on the bottom.
On the Participants panel, you click Attendees.
Yeah, and then go to Attendees. There's Gary Crosby. Brian Woodhead. Okay.
All right, I'm going out on a limb here that Ma'bahama 17% has got to be met.
That is met.
Are we good?
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our April 6th Portsmouth Town Council meeting. This is our first streaming live council meeting. So before we get started, I just want to let everyone know if you're participating at home through the online version, online process, if you have a question, there should be a hand button at the bottom of your screen. You press that, we'll be notified that there's a question coming in. If you're calling in on the phone, you would press star nine in order to ask a question at the appropriate time. When you are acknowledged with your question, please provide us with your name and address so we can record that for the meeting minutes, and then you'll be allowed to ask your question. We do ask that, similar to other council meetings, we try to limit the time to about three minutes during some of the discussions. So with that, we're going to start with our first meeting. First, we will stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for our men and women serving harm's way. Pledge of allegiance, use the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God.
Indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Okay. First item is our roll call, so I need to announce the name of the counselors, and if you could please say President. Dr. Ryan?
Present.
Lynn Katzen?
Present.
Linda Uchafusa?
Present.
Daniela Abbott?
Present.
Andrew Kelly?
Present.
Steve Hamilton?
Present.
Mr. Iger.
Mr. Iger, present. Thank you all. Okay, President's executive summary. I don't know if it's more of a summary or just a message. I do want to thank the town administrator, all the department heads, and all of the folks at the EOC, the volunteers, that have been putting in some very long days and doing their part to help protect and inform the citizens of the town of Portsmouth. They've done some tremendous work over these past few weeks. And we know moving forward, we still have a ways to go in not knowing what's coming. But I feel that with the leadership that's in place, the provisions that are in place, we're going to be okay. We will all get through this. It's definitely an adjustment. But I do want to acknowledge and thank and all the department heads and the EOC and all the volunteers for their work. It's definitely not going unnoticed. We've made tremendous progress with food banks, acknowledging, reaching out to our senior citizens, our distance learning, there's been a lot of changes that have occurred over the past few weeks. And I think as a community, we're doing our part, and I just, I ask everybody that's listening to continue with the social distancing, continue to do your part so that we can all celebrate when this is over. And we will get through this. It will just take us a little bit of time, so thank you. Onto our consent agenda. If I could have a...
Motion to approve as presented.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Sorry. I have to...
You have to do a roll call?
This is new, so the clerk will ask, and you can say yea or nay.
Ms. Uchafusa?
You're muted, Linda.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mr. Katzen?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Next, we have minutes. We have minutes from our town council meeting on March 9, and minutes from our town council meeting on the 16th, which was our emergency session.
Move to approve.
I second the amendment. The minutes for the regular meeting, I just want to add that in the discussion part, or in new business, the item about synergy, I believe that we did ask, or I asked them to come back and provide more information. If you could just note that in a minute.
Okay, are you quick to that? So we need to amend the minutes of 3:9 with some corrections by Ms. Uchafusa. So the... Have a... So is that to approve as amended?
Yes.
Yeah.
Motion to approve as amended. Seconded. So all those in favor?
Ms. Uchafusa?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzen?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Next, we have tax vouchers. We have approval of tax vouchers 2020-0406-01 to 2020-0406-04.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Ms. Uchafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Katzen?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Onto our town administrators' report.
Mr. Ray?
Good evening, Mr. President, Council, ladies and gentlemen. As everyone is aware, Rhode Island is under a stay-at-home border. And as this crisis takes on and weather gets nicer, we'll be attempting to lower our guard and try to get back to our normal lives. However, we can only begin to work and go back to school and open our economy if we all remain at home, keep our distance from each other, limit our contacts, and stay at home if we are sick. But everybody, please keep in mind, the first responders and healthcare workers who are on the front lines of this fight are doing this for us, and every time you put your own health at risk, you're putting their health at risk as well. Thank you to the vast majority of our residents who are following these critical directives. As a reminder, state parks and beaches are closed. Portsmouth playgrounds are closed, but Portsmouth parks remain open. We encourage residents to get out and walk our parks. And we will, and we can continue to do this only if everyone follows the rules. Since the very start of this crisis, we have endeavored to do everything we can to keep our residents informed, accurately assess the impact of COVID-19 on our community, and provide information and assistance for families and businesses. Our recent initiatives include the setup of a Portsmouth food bank, a wellness check survey of every Portsmouth household, and the solicitation and procurement of PPE for our first responders. Information is updated every single day on our website, and I encourage everyone to check it out. Once there, you will find information covering everything from unclinical directed information to small business loan programs, to mental health resources, to cloth face masks. Speaking of which, on your camera, you can see, you'll see a display of face masks which were locally made by volunteers in Portsmouth. So I'd like to thank BFW Post 5390, So Nice Portsmouth, Cynthia Fontaine, Rhonda Bishop, and the Portsmouth volunteers working as part of our incident management team. Most importantly, I want everyone to know that your Portsmouth staff are here to help. Please don't hesitate to contact us if you need help. And I thank you for your patience, support, and cooperation during this unprecedented time. With respect to the budget, Mr. President, the proposed budget is ready for the council's review and has been posted on the town's website today. Town council binders are available for pickup at the police station. I hope you will forgive the delay in turning it over to you for your review, but I think you understand it was necessary to take a little time to prepare it due to our current circumstances. A little more time than normal. Additionally, as noted in the correspondence that you approved tonight, C, I'd just like to point out that CRMC has granted interim approval to our harbor management plan. However, the Army Corps of Engineers is currently developing a new policy for harbor management plan review. So CRMC is providing a one-year interim approval for our harbor management plan that to be extended as necessary to accommodate the Army Corps of Engineers. Who's going to report, Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Okay. Onto our resignations and appointments. First item, it's a resignation for the housing authority for...
Move to accept with regret.
Seconded.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Ms. Uchafusa?
Yay.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzen?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. We also have a resignation for the solid waste and recycling committee for Mr. Mike Iron.
Move to accept with regret.
Second.
Ms. Uchafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Katzen?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Onto appointments. We have appointments for the agriculture committee. One vacancy is Mr. Jeff Reese.
Move to approve Mr. Jeffrey Reese for both the agricultural and conservation commission.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Uchafusa?
To your call.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzen?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all. And then on to the last ones, the planning board vacancy for Seth Pilat or Pilat.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Uchafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Katzen?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all. Onto old business. Old business number one, the monthly financial report, Mr. President.
Right now, we're about 67% of the way through current fiscal year. Overall, our revenues are currently at 69%, slightly ahead where they should be, where we anticipated they would be. And expenditures are 62% lower than where we anticipated, much lower than last year's 71%, so in good shape. There were no significant wire or clear income transfers to report. And as we started last meeting, we will be attaching a monthly report with my man, I'll smile. To this, a monthly report.
Okay, thank you. Onto new business.
Move to receive and place on file.
Second.
Thank you. All of the favor?
Ms. Uchafusa?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzen?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all.
Mr. President?
Yes?
May I ask a quick question of Mr. Rayner? And it's probably a little premature to ask this, but have we seen a market increase in expenses over the past month that are going to affect how we finish the year?
No, it's a good question. Right now, because we're so low with respect to where we expected to be with respect to expenditures, I expect we'll finish fine. There obviously is an uptick in overtime. We have, right now, in the town, 12 people in quarantine, eight of which are firefighters. So there's been a big uptick in overtime in the firefighting department. There's also been an uptick in procurement of small items, things that really don't cost that much, but collectively, they do add up, and that is equipment to support the EOC. We'll have a better idea next month where we're at, but right now, I expect that we're going to finish the year with a surplus. And if you remember, the very opposite of this crisis, we did freeze all discretionary spending so that we would be able to absorb this kind of a digital pressure.
Thank you.
There's no other questions. I can't see the little hands anymore, so... All right. Okay. Onto new business. New business number one. It's a public hearing. It's to consider the proposed amendment to Chapter 405 of the zoning ordinance to include the sole ordinance. There's a request to postpone this until May 11.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. All those in favor?
Can I, excuse me, can I interrupt? We really should, because of the notice requirements and the advertising. The reason we put this on the agenda was so we could convene the hearing and then continue it to a date certain.
We should.
So, Mr. President, you just need to open a public hearing.
Open the hearing, and then, on the record, continue it, which you already did. I'm probably being nitpicky, but...
All right, so the motion's open, and so the meeting is open. And then we're going to... And then now they're just...
Move to continue.
Moving to continue to mail out. Well, then we have a question.
Mr. Crowe?
Hello?
Yes, Mr. Crowe.
Gary Crosby, town planner, allow me to represent anyone who wants to comment on the subject. I think, at hand, I think it's working very well. All I did was raise my hand, and I was acknowledged. And congratulations to you all for how this is working. Thank you.
Okay. So we've opened the public hearing, and now we are continuing.
Motion to continue.
Motion to continue till to May 11. All those in favor?
Ms. Uchafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzen?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all. And then on to new business number two. It's approval of an ordinance temporarily suspending enforcement of Chapter 326, Article 6, plastic bag, the plastic bag of the Portsmouth Town Code. Mr. Ray?
Mr. President, this came up every day. We have a conference call with all the 39 managers and mayors in Rhode Island. This has come up throughout Rhode Island as a measure to alleviate some of the issues that particularly small businesses are facing. Quite frankly, they're running out of bags because of the order to stay at home or to do only takeout. They can't keep up with the bags, so they're asking for relief. We reached out to a number of small businesses, and particularly, we also reached out to Clemens. Clemens has also asked for some relief. This would be in line with what many of the other towns are doing. I understand there's a fear that so many people work so hard to get this in place that it would set us going backwards. That's not the intent here. The intent here is just to provide some relief during this crisis, after which we would sunset this... This change. I don't know if Rich Tulipski is online. I know that he's done a lot of work on this. Rich, if you can raise your hand where you are.
Okay, this is Rich Tulipski, 79 Cromwell Drive, Director of Business Development. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I know this is probably not a big expense for town businesses or relief of expense, but it's one of the small things we can do on a local level to show our support of our small businesses in our town.
Rich, I have some questions, if I may.
Sure.
One, have any other towns actually passed this yet?
Yes, there are a number of towns. They've done it in three different ways primarily. They've either done it just through executive order, or they suspended the ordinance, or the ordinance remains on the books and are just choosing not to enforce it. And right now, I think we're up to about five or six towns that are contemplating to do it as soon as they hold their next meeting.
Okay, why, next question is, why September 14th? Where did that date come from?
Six months. That was because if they're going to, it doesn't matter what date we give them. We just picked six months only because we don't know how long this is going to go, and it allows the businesses to plan for restocking of the paper bags. So if they have a date, they know that they've got to get their orders in, and there's been some lag time in getting the paper bags because many of these paper bags are sourced from China, and they're having difficulty getting them.
Where are the plastic bags sourced?
Well, many of these companies already have these plastic bags because either their distributors are distributing to the same kinds of businesses or franchises in areas where there is no plastic bag van, or they have stock on hand from when we initiate the source.
Another point is that if we'd used clean plastic bags, that would minimize the transfer of potential virus from reusable bags that are being handled by the baggers. I know it's probably a small concern, but the CDC recommends laundering reusable bags both before and after use, and I doubt that everybody's doing that.
Yeah, but this...
Massachusetts has instituted a ban on the reusable bags, which has had a carryover to Rhode Island because so many people go back.
The reusable bags make sense, but the virus, the CDC also says the virus lives on plastic for up to 72 hours and on cardboard only 24, so, you know, plastic bags could potentially be more dangerous than the paper bags. And along the same line, if we're going to give relief to our small businesses, how about the orange bags that our residents have to go to the store to buy to be able to go to the transfer station? Shouldn't we give them relief from that?
Well, we looked into that. It's a good question. There's a couple of issues that revolve around that. One, there's been no problem in sourcing those bags. And two, that revenue is... That's factored into the sticker price. So the longer you don't sell those bags, the higher the sticker price is going to be next year.
Rich, my concern is that we really don't need to do this. And the reason is, based on my own personal experience, when I've gone shopping, people put things in a cart, you know, to shop around. When they check out, you could do what they do at BJ's or Costco, whenever, you just put the stuff in the cart again, and then you wheel it out to your car, and you can bag it in your reusable bags at your car or just put it in your trunk. We're really talking about plastic bags that have to be used only for that brief moment between cashier and car. And it doesn't seem like that's necessary, because again, you don't do that at BJ's, and I know that items are larger, but nonetheless, theoretically, it's the same idea. So I don't feel they're necessary when you're grocery shopping. And as for food, food's already in containers, many times plastic, that are already leak-proof. And I know that I just put a cardboard box in my cook trunk, and people just have been putting the takeout food in this cardboard box, so I don't really see the need for a plastic bag around plastic containers. So I'm sort of leaning towards not voting for this.
Yeah, I would have to agree with Ms. Uchafusa. I think this is not necessary. I feel like there's other ways we can support our small businesses without peddling back on something that I think is a very important ordinance for our town. There are ways around this, and in the interest of minimizing how many people handle your food, you know, maybe no bags is the option, but we can leave that up for people to decide. But I'm leaning towards no. I really don't see a need to, you know, go back on this.
In speaking to small businesses, the reality is they're going to run out of paper bags. That's one of the reasons that they've kind of rolled it back in Massachusetts as well. We're talking about a six-month stay. I personally don't want to go to Clemens or anyplace else and have to juggle my food out of the door. BJ's is a different story. Everything's in bulk. But I don't want to be juggling my apples and my brown beef and my chicken going out the door with a few blocks of cheese or something and have it fall in a parking lot at Clemens. It's six months. The world's not going to be destroyed in six months by plastic bag van or lifting it for six months. It's going to help our citizens out, and it's going to make it easier for our citizens to go shopping at Clemens.
I've shopped at Clemens. I'm not juggling. I just take the stuff in the carriage to the car, put it in the trunk. I'm not sure why you need to have this extra container for your items, so my personal experience is different than yours, Mr. Hamilton.
There's plenty of people who walk to Clemens, and they need the bags.
I can't see. Is there any other comments? I just, I have a couple of comments. I just wanted to wait. Mr. Katzen?
In describing how this came about, how this ordinance resolution came about, it sounded like you heard from other towns and communities and also reached out to Clemens. Are there other businesses that reached out to the town? Was this driven by local businesses?
Rich Tulipski, are you still online? Okay, I think we've lost, which I think Clemens would be one of the biggest, but you know...
Well, I know that, as I understood the circumstances, the town reached out to Clemens rather than Clemens reaching out to the town. I'm just interested in knowing if I reach out to others also, or if there's...
We communicated via the Portsmouth Business Association Constant Contact List, who went back to Jeannie Smith, the president, but I don't have a specific list of businesses that were contacted.
I'm just trying to get a sense of, beyond Clemens, are there others who care about this?
I think you would also take into account some of the restaurants. There's a lot of takeout food going on right now, so some are using paper bags. Some are using, I think, you know, the restaurant business has kind of been thrown into it because they're offering takeout, and I think a lot of these places, their takeout has gone, you know, exponential because they're not traditionally takeout restaurants. So they're doing anything and everything they can to help you, you know... So they're doing anything and everything they can to help you, you know, get your food out to the car. So I think, you know, plastic bags for them might also be helpful. You know, I do appreciate the comments that are being made by all the counselors. It was a long process to get a bag ban in place across, you know, many other communities in Rhode Island. But I think this is just a temporary ban. I would hope that we could support our local businesses, provide them a little bit of relief here. And knowing that, you know, there is a sunset on this, you know, we'll go back to our ordinance and our good stewardship. But at this point, I think every little bit helps. You know, if that's something we can do, we should be looking forward to it. It came to my attention because we were no longer able to use our reusable bags. And I think that will be the norm going forward, is to not use your reusable bags until this, you know, pandemic has subsided. So this could be four or five months, you know, before they're going to allow you, you know, bring back reusable bags. So, you know, I think the six months is reasonable. If things clear up sooner, we could always amend this and reinstitute it. But I think it would be, you know, a good effort to our local businesses in order to support them. And it is Clemens probably for the most part, but there are some smaller businesses, a lot of the restaurants. I think we'd also appreciate a little bit of relief here. So I am in favor of it. There's a question? Who?
I've just found that, Mr. Chairman, I've found that I've been able to use my reusable bags, even purchasing things at Clemens because I just keep them in my trunk and I load the stuff, or you could do it from basket into your bags, and then would seem to reduce the employees' exposure to.
I appreciate your comments, all good comments. Is there another question?
There's a comment.
Member of the public.
The Dollar General would be a nightmare with no bag, is the comment.
Oh, where's that?
Under Q and A.
I can't see that. All right. We're still learning here.
It's a five-second nightmare because you would be able to put your stuff into your reusable bag in the trunk of your car.
And we're assuming that they won't be able to get paper bags until September. And businesses that aren't typically takeout, that are having trouble finding, having bags because they didn't have them in stock, they're not going to have plastic bags in stock either. So I feel like we're kind of creating issues that don't really exist.
Anything, any other questions? I mean, any other comments? If there are no other comments, we can.
Actually, I have one more question. How is this being enforced? And, I mean, Mr. Rayner, you said so yourself. There are towns that didn't necessarily, you know, override their ordinance but aren't currently enforcing it. That gives you a lot more flexibility, and we don't actually have to, you know, undo an ordinance that people spent years trying to get past.
That's exactly what they're doing. There are some towns that are just choosing not to enforce it. So if somebody is violating, if there's a restaurant, a store, what have you, a business that is using plastic bags, they're just not enforcing the law.
And are we really going to go find people for using plastic bags in the middle of a pandemic?
We have this.
Okay.
Okay.
It's a six-month window to provide relief for our citizens. I think it's a no-brainer.
A matter of principle for me. I think the default will become to use the plastic bags and just bag the groceries in the plastic bag for everybody that comes in. And I think it takes us, you know, ten steps back on the tiny little bit of progress that we made. So I'm not in favor of the ordinance or, yeah, the new ordinance.
It's not a new ordinance. It's a six-month stay on the current ordinance.
All right. I'm not in favor of the six-month stay on the current ordinance.
I mean, there could be a voluntary component to this. I went to Stop &amp; Shop yesterday, and I just had them put the groceries into my cart. You know, it could be up to the individual. If you don't want bags, you don't have to have them. The baggers are perfectly willing to put the stuff back in your cart.
And even people walking home could have their reusable bags with them and just put the stuff from the cart into their reusable bags and walk home with them.
No, I don't think they let you bring the reusable bag into the store. I know with Market Basket, they do not.
Yeah, I think it's kind of hit or miss because Stop &amp; Shop, I was told I could have brought my reusable bags in, but I would have to do the bagging myself. It kind of doesn't make a lot of sense, but anyway.
Okay, well, I mean, I think we've heard some good comments. I don't know if anyone else has any further questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I would move that we approve the six-month stay on the ordinance.
Have a second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Ms. Ujafusa?
Nay.
Ms. Abbott?
Nay.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Katzen?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Nay.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes four to three. Thank you. Okay. On to correspondence. Anybody like to pull anything?
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Ujafusa?
Aye.
All dog new tricks.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzen?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Onto the future meetings. Our future meetings, we're going to be kicking off our budget review. So the week of April twentieth, we've got April twenty, April twenty-one, April twenty-two, April twenty-three, all dedicated to budget, and then our regular meeting on May eleventh.
Mr. President, I don't know if it's intentional, but I see that Mr. Crosby has his hand raised.
Crosby?
Gary? There you are. I just wanted to say I represent the constituent who would jump up to the podium and raise a fuss about this or that or the other thing. And there has been no impediment to me doing so. And I would say, thank you all. This has worked perfectly.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
It is a journey here tonight. This is definitely different. But I think it might be the new norm for a little bit. And I think we'll be doing this come the week of April twentieth, so I will hone in on my skills. But that's it for future meetings.
Actually, Mr. President, I guess that was my question. We're assuming that all those meetings are going to be held on this virtual platform?
Yes, I believe so. I mean, barring some, and trust me, if something, a miracle happens all here, I welcome it. But I don't think that's going to happen. I think we're going to continue to adapt here and social distance ourselves. But we'll get better at this process. Thank you all for your, you know, your time in getting ready for tonight. We did have, you know, a couple of little hiccups that will get through. Me, especially because it's hard now. I've got, I'm trying to look straight at the camera, but you guys are all up on the right. So sorry if I'm looking in two different places. But thank you all. And I look forward to doing this again on the twentieth. That's all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzen?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Good night, all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, thank you.
Have a good night.